This is, uh, Craig Eaton. Uh, this is, um, this is a working in the city council. Today's date is, um, on Thursday, on Tuesday, uh, it's a Thursday. Here, this Eaton has been really advertised in the city council for, 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 uh, the United States, otherwise known as Sunshine, uh, Oklahoma.
I'm James James IV.
President.
I'm Lauren here. Um, this is from the Florida.
Southern.
Korean.
Right.
This one.
Look.
All of them here. That's our motion.
Thank you.
I. And as we have all the officers to game clear, to come forward within their role that we go in my area. State of New Jersey County of the Bank, I.
James Lewis.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear due faith and allegiance.
That I will bear due faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And the government established.
And the government established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will look, that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
And justly perform all the duties.
And justly perform all the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of police chief.
With.
City. For the city of Flatbun.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
To help me God.
To help me God.
Help me God. We have a new team, Team One. On this afternoon, I called them and I said, and I teach them, Deputy Steve Williams. I've been the last time I'm able to say this, so congratulations, Steve.
Thank you, thank you. I just want to introduce a few people. This is my mother, Mary Ann, my wife, Udi, my three sons back there, that was James, that's James IV, that's in my bedroom, my son, Jaden, Sunrise, my sister, Levina. Thank you. Just right here, I mean, I, I'm like almost lost for words here. I mean, running around here as a, as a little kid in Pleasantville, coming through the police department parking lot, all my view, something like that, and I'm here at the AM twenty-three years later to see the police. It's just, it's just an amazing thing. For my son, hard work does pay off. So I, I am extremely proud to say acknowledge a few people, you know, that are in the back there. Open Bruce back there, Msu back there, Chaplin, I can't forget you, Scope, can't forget you, Dean Henderson there, he was called every year, said he wasn't coming back, funny thing back there. Long for you, long for you. John, Johnny D, I appreciate you making it. Cindy and Frank Fowles, I appreciate you guys making it. And my guys standing back there in uniform, I know you're listening to the radio, trying not to run out, but I appreciate everybody here showing up. Kevin Potts over there, Captain Warren Howes is like my left hand over there. You know, I depend on him a lot, he always comes through, so. I know it's going to be challenging, it started off challenging, the first of the year, but, you know, my guys here, they get out there, they do the work, and then I come and, uh, find Mary and, and ask for things. So I'm, I'm really excited and, uh, looking forward to the challenge. Thank you everyone. Congratulations.
Chief, I want to say congratulations. I know you have do a excellent job, because you've been doing excellent job, and God bless you.
Thank you.
I am just so happy, I am thrilled for you, this is wonderful. I, I think it couldn't be in better means.
Thank you.
Congratulations, you have a very nice job.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations, Tom. I know you do a good job, but I've been done too long, and I appreciate you, I love you, thank you. Thank you. Congratulations, Chief. Thank you, sir. Looking forward to the rest of the year. Congratulations, Chief, and it's funny because I call you Chief all the time, you always tell me, not yet Tony, I haven't heard. So good luck, man, proud of you. Thank you, thank you.
I love moments like this. They're very special, this is so deserving. Um, no one knows, I think, what mayor I, you, and what we have to go through, this is so special. But you are a champion with all, um, and I, I couldn't wait for this day to come, because, um, you are special. And I know you mentioned a lot of folks out there, but real special when you have to be a side page out there. Congratulations, I look forward to working with you, a great team player, you're an awesome leader, and, um, I just look forward to what's coming up next in our, uh, police department of the US of America.
Thank you, thank you so much, Chief. Congratulations, Chief. Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it. We're family, uh, I know you do a great job, we've worked together for such a long time, all the evidence, and you're, you're prepared for the job, and, you know, maybe this won't happen, I could get to the partnership. We'll see.
Chief, I just want to say congratulations again, seriously, and just thank you for everything. You and I have been working together since, really, since I became one as mayor, and I appreciate you. I appreciate that you have come up, and blessed us all from birth on. You know, this is really, really special, and you have a glove for the city. I can say that, and the residents, and I appreciate that. That's what we need, compassion, along with everything else.
Thank you.
And I bless you, we love you, and good luck.
Thank you so much.
Today's sodium is, I'm sorry, I don't know what to do, so, we have two students from Pleasantville, hi, that's going to be sitting in with the Capitol meeting, and they're here today, this is their first meeting, and they're going to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Nadia, I'm a freshman at the Oldham.
Hi, I'm Andy, I'm a senior from the high school.
Hello, my name is Andrea, I'm a freshman from the high school.
Okay, um, I'm Andy, I'm a senior from the high school.
Um, I'm Jay, I'm also a senior from the high school.
And I'm Nadia, and I'm a freshman at the Oldham.
So we're going to have three? We're going to have three students?
Yes.
Oh, okay, good. More than we are, yeah.
Awesome.
Thank you.
So they do have a, a little report that you want to share what you got.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, we wanted to start out by showing some, displaying, telling me about some stuff happening up from the high school, that you guys may not be aware of. Um, so mostly probably know about the early college program that backfired at the Oldham High School. Last year, we had nine students graduate with an associate's degree, um, and then some of them continued on in the summer to get their associate's degree later on. This year, as of now, we have twenty sixteen years of the program. Um, that's just the seniors, our sophomore, freshmen, and junior class keep growing, and there's so many people in that. Um, and right now, we have fifteen students, so four more than last year on track to graduate with their associate's degree, which is great.
That is great.
Um, we also want to play about the Black History Show. Last week, the Pleasantville High School did the Black History Show, um, directed by Mr. Arthur Taylor, he's a dance teacher at Pleasantville High School. Um, it was a phenomenal show, took weeks to put together, um, Ian Stace was part of that show. Um, it was a great show to put on, it kind of just, the theme of the show was the black New Jersey, so a lot of historical figures from New Jersey, um, such as Whitney Houston, Kuna Lisa, um, Patty Harris, uh, a lot of just different, um, honorable African Americans that came from New Jersey were mentioned in there. We even had our principal, one of our principals, Ms. Raina Hendricks, do a number, she sung for us too, so that was great.
Oh, so, um, I am on the Pleasantville track team, so I was with, uh, one of my teammates, Dana Roberts. So, um, we are currently, our outdoor track season, our, has indoor season, he actually competed in the four hundred meter, um, race, and he set a record at the Eastern State Tournament with a forty eight point four second four hundred meter, and he's now All-American at the level award, and broke the Pleasantville record for one.
Hey, I'm the Pleasantville Girl TC with Sergeant Mac and Agent Merritt, and over the last drill season, he actually came in first in four different events. Our let one and let threes came in first place for their drill competition, and a lot of these have been heavy task. I'm also in the student summit as well, the Children's Coalition, I have you on Friday, with my group, and Pleasantville has just very been, very active pertinent. We have been on video shows presented on Friday for violent, toxic words, like after COVID, and this one made me just on the road Friday.
So we wanted to highlight some of the events that are going on at the end of the year, so, if you want to pass these out, just the events that are going on at the Oldham High School. So the evening night, that is the early college, it's a nice way to have, um, most of the early college students come together, meaning bacteria, depending how many students we have, and they present some projects, some things they've been working on throughout the year in their early college program, we haven't had one since before, so this is going to be great. Um, there's a junior, senior prom, this year, the theme for it is next to the castle, so it's going to be a lot of elegant, royalty, um, it's going to be a chair from a city, so somebody who can make it out could have a great, and you all, it's going to be great.
Andy, I wanted to say that, um, many, that anything that you all have going on, this is good, but anything that you have going on, now that you're here, I guess people have better communicate you. But I used to go to college, they used to let us milk at all the concerts and everything, you know, that you all need to have, but we don't get that notice anymore. I would love to have been at, um, the show that you guys put on last week, Black History Show, and.
We have that Christmas musical, that I'll be sure to share the date with you.
Please, yeah.
Okay, it's called One From This Island, um, it's kind of like a Romeo Juliet situation, um, an island is divided in half, a peasant and the, uh, the wealthy, and a peasant grow up, and wealthy, a wealthy man, and they have to see if their love is meant to be.
That sounds good, that sounds good. And, um, the, uh, college program, that's great, the early college, because the graduation, I remember, um, one of the teachers telling the students, don't, yeah, you can come back to one spring break and be able to study.
Yeah.
That's a big deal, be able to come back and do that, that's a good extra money. That's my job, good, congratulations.
Thank you. I just want to say congratulations, uh, it's amazing, because I think me and Miss Thomas was part of bringing that program to the school through the quarter, and so that's something I've never looked about, you guys take care of each other. Good luck.
Guys, I'm so happy to see you guys here, getting involved, I've come out here, I've got that, congratulations, you're welcome, boy. I hope to see more of you, good, welcome.
Good job, keep doing good job, you can get some, uh, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Glad to learn your work, thank you on your graduation. That's the most important thing, congratulations, everybody's paying for your graduation. Well, Janice has three more years.
Um, I'm not sure if I will, just here from the press. Chris, I just want to make sure that you're here, the positive work that, um, our Pleasantville students are doing in the, um, neighborhood, so I just wanted to say, keep up the great work. I have a son over there, he's a sophomore out this year, um, listen, don't give Mrs. Chapman and Miss Hendricks a hard time, honey, but, um, congratulations, I'm happy to have you all here, and hope to see you next month.
Yeah, I'm glad, thank you for coming, just glad to have you, and if you make sure you get all the bases up, and you're just really clear, correct, and all just keep, I mean, I'm, I'm giving up the, uh, some of the tape, some of the rest. Thinking, keep up the good work.
Bye bye, nice to know.
Make some use of it.
Next reason you want is to affect discussion.
The purpose of executive session tonight is to question, with me tonight, is my colleague, Mr. Levinson, Craig Shankin.
Thank you, your honor.
Which is anything.
Thank you.
It'll take approximately twenty minutes or so.
So we all have to debate an executive session behind your office, two minutes, or twenty minutes?
I'm the motion.
Motion? Motion.
Second, fourth, and I.
And that's what we amend with, this is ordinance number three, second reading, the chair will be held on regular reading, amended chapter forty-eight, police department entitled powers, information, as in section forty-eight, that fourteen A, entitled presumption, of civil service examination. Ordinance number four, first reading, amended chapter one sixteen, and chapter three hundred of city code, regulating the operations of cannabis prevention.
This is just for schools only, correct? It's specifically for redevelopment areas only, and when there is a school in that area, it's supposed to be completed, and it's certainly, it's new.
What's the next question? This is for, uh, school, I don't know, for me.
We know that there could be a potential problem down the first.
All right, so you go, go, relax, go, relax.
Relax, yeah.
Uh, any more questions?
Resolution seventy-two, approval to participate in the leave and implementation grant.
I have a question. What is, as to, could we leave the car? Can I, um, just ask that, we have a representative here from the city, who wants to ask that, um, just want to present the information for the new grant, with the shared subject area, with the need, um, to power the, as long as, for this is a, for our flood payment management, um, program and the software that, uh, a company has, uh, shared with the state, that we believe is, uh, on the screw line of what that we do with flood payment management area. So we have Shalana Stewart, and you're all within your stance, are they both here?
Yes.
Right, if they can come up, they're going to give you a brief, uh, summary of what is going to be, and you can add some comments there.
Thank you, ladies. Because you follow, well, Shalana's goal, so we can understand why we do. You may ask someone else here, it's Tim, uh, pressure from the Capitol, where the, uh, the chairman personally courted, yes, all right. Good evening, everyone, I'm Shalana Stewart, I'm the queen of the domain, the board secretary, city's manager, and he stands about the year.
Community rating system?
Yes, all right.
Tim pressure, uh, chair of service, clearly, before you, yeah.
Uh, so the program, um, that is, that is, is the four round flood payment management system program, uh, it is a flood management site form, which focuses on the beginning of future flood damage, particularly in heavy uses of the federal flood insurance program, with the software, the design, is designed to help simplify the workflow, uh, and save time with flood payment management and community rating, which is, you know, as we see that. Um, the system has, has a municipal feature, uh, that has, uh, effective influence during that, in the system. Uh, the system also, uh, gives, uh, information and warnings about properties that are located in flood zone areas. Um, it allows the, the time limit between the citizen and the resident to give information out there, whether it's flood, damage, um, information, and, you know, as we get information from city locals, the management changes.
Yes, um, as the law, Shalana stated, um, as far as, um, information that the residents could go on and get, is an excellent portion of the program, because last year, which was thousand and twenty-one, our research was determined, because we needed to do a, uh, Excel sheet to get, get the information of what the name of the property owner was, what their problem was, what was the recommendation, and it, I'm going to say cannabis, you know, chemicals, I don't know, if he's out working with somebody else, and somebody else just comes up, and he might say, oh, well, could you stop out here with me, B? If he has a program, you have a system, because we have two licenses, you have the system and the program with him, and he could document it. And let's say he made a note, got back to the office, and then he just put that note into that Excel sheet, he gets a phone call, that note may never get into. At the end of the year, we're seeing this, that is, we need a list of all the recommendations that you gave, the person you spoke to, the time, date, you don't have to get, you get it to my end, but this system allows them to put the information in, and. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Allows, allows you to put the information and, and track, um, the system, and you can export that from the system, which is, uh, a, which is satisfying for court, for people. Also, um, the, oh, and certificate. We have the ninety percent accuracy, you get two chances, and then they report you to FEMA. At that point, nine, class nine, if you're, if you, nine percent, you go to class nine. Anything under that, go back to class ten, ten, which means you can't participate in progress. Let me get the, I think we have, you have, excuse me, sorry. Thank you. You're welcome, all right. Also, there's a hundred and fifty checkpoint for the ECR, um, and the elevation certificate. As I stated, they have to be nice, if they're accurate, and this hundred and fifty checkpoint goes through different points that you normally miss, or if they pick up something that you have not covered, they'll let you know in the system, which is correct, and that's a thing to get some chances before they report it. Um, and that is one of the new additions that they put on there, because we have to have a new system for the activities, the sixty, and, uh, um, system, the CRF has the information law, will help us with that, because as the residents come log in, and see the information, we keep logs in, and we can get back to them, and they can keep logs. And so, in a nutshell, I just want to state that this is one of the first programs, and I've seen it a long time, that has helped Pleasantville become very efficient, it's going to streamline the work, I would say, at least fifty percent. Because what happens is, all the work that the flood payment manager, the ECR, is coordinating, is doing, is manual. We have box and box of information, where this information is stored, uh, the public, for, uh, protective property owners come in, and you have to look for the information. Once, if, if you guys vote in public, and it's for something, to this party, we see tonight, what will happen is, this company will come in and create a system, all of the companies are downloaded, and now that is finished, and then you want to go into our website, there'll be a link to our website, to go in, um, and get the information, and it's taken this. So, um, I think this, with five other communities, that's less, five other communities, so there's a cost sharing, so it would be a expensive, I heard one young lady mentioned that there's a cost of the license fee, we're requesting that, um, we get free licenses at a thousand dollars, which, and I believe the free licenses would be for the flood payment manager, the campaign, by the country, also, we're, uh, planning, we can be, basically, coordinated also, Shalana Stewart, people are going to have, so, 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 so. So, um, we, you know, we're requesting that we should, um, support the free licenses, and whatever the target fees are, which Shalana, if you go and get them quickly, and see what that looks like. So it would be a shared service agreement, um, with the city of Longport, that we've seen regarding, uh, the thing, um, Longport will be the administrative of five, the lease grant, um, and it, and we ran a hundred and seventy-five percent of the cost of the program. That will be the other, the other twenty-five percent, um, and it will be three thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars for the onboarding fee, and it's actually one thousand dollars for free licenses, the previous, which holds out three thousand dollars. So the full cost of the program would be six thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Um, as we've seen, says, the biggest feature here, and we're hoping for the, I'm sure, the conflict, is that, that that goes to the residents, to get information. The fact that the, uh, elevation certificate was distorted to this system, it will sustain the cost for the residents, to having to go in there and get it, and saying we're done, and elevation certificate every time we work, because the certificate will now be housed in the system, and they get people to go out, and they go in, and put the elevation certificate in as well. Um, and like I said, it's sort of a time limit between the cities and the residents, to allow us to get, uh, less, and, 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 and.
Do you want to just add, uh, if you went out and you run, got this program for three years, it will cost you thirty-five thousand dollars. So the, using the lease grant and the time to the scale, of that minimum penalty, the way we do it, saves you considerable amount of money, as the minister said, it's a much more efficient.
Will those be part of the bus challenge?
I like have, once, uh, are doing revolutions on that, uh, Longport, uh, to Oceano, uh, D, eighteen, Eggmarket Township, Hamilton Township, and, um, Floodville, Oakwood, and I'm still waiting there for the, and so much, and, and, and.
No, they don't do this, right?
And this three law, um, now, this, uh, this is sort of open, this is the, this is the program in this state, um, and so we're really, uh, being impressive, so, um, we're getting the program, and, um, the program, um, initiated, and, um, this is kind of first time with participating under this brand, um, our, uh, original, for the county, uh, since you got in contact with us, for the, one idea, or something like that.
Trail of Valley, I think.
Yeah, definitely. So, um, this is something that's going to be difficult, and, um, we want to ensure that our residents have access to it, and we want to be able to.
Uh, does this information come from, is it individual, or, uh, like, so, can you make your obligation part of the, or is it?
So initially, when, um, it's, when, as we said, that's a little bit, we've seen for the, then, when the county, um, residents came in to repair their homes, um, we had to go out and, uh, make sure their home was ready, uh, as a base flood elevation cluster. Um, that information requires, we need to go out, get an engineer and a survey, to, uh, draft that, uh, the, 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 for them. Um, that information is then turned over to heaven, to ensure that whatever work they're doing on their home, is, is, that, that requirement. Um, so we have some of that information, as the, uh, case is, and boxes up, we have, you know, boxes and boxes of information. Um, and so it'll allow us to keep and store all this information in one centralized place, that relates to these properties. Um, it also has some benefits to planning the zoning, because you'll have the planning and zoning map, only there's no resident who knows it, or who has, uh, real pretty medical, and people coming in, who don't revise, they'll know what zone that their buyer is. Uh, it also gives you, you're rated for two hundred times of the flood, so, all that information will be registered there, over to the residents. Right now, what's happening is, they're usually, this is a delaying process, because they have to get it for eight months, cutting, having to calculate it, and the annual, um, which doesn't allow for any error on cutting the path, you know, because you see all that math calculation is done there. is done daily. Um, and it's usually slow, slow up the process for the residents to make sure they order the homeowner or the temp deposit in their transaction.
Is this going to be downloadable or is it, are we able to access it online or just, uh, we have to?
No, so once the residents report it, we're focusing on. Now, the municipal side of it, the information will be held, will be held in a computer that has it, uh, because it's giving us all the technical. But there will be a public access to it in five weeks, if it's, uh, in a week.
So this is, uh, a part of, uh, shared service, right? So if there was more to come in, would we get a better rate or is this?
No, I don't think it's per city. Uh, we need a five municipality to go in to, to get the deal on that's per city. So if we have more towns come in, we'll, we'll choose. It's very expensive.
Question. So right now, there is five, correct? So how soon will we, will we be able to implement?
You got, you got, uh, no, the, the revolution tonight, uh, which is the action that the next action required, we require a revolution, um, the April 31st, the revolution tonight will allow Longport to apply for the grant, we can add a little five municipality. We're looking at the awards sometime between July and July. So by the time we get all the information of those, and the citizens, we'll be looking at how we do that camera, how it matters, or, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh.
Hopefully it all goes well, you, you get the deal of this city.
Will this deal also be moved along, if there's only, you know, come in, talk to this?
It can be used for anybody who's only getting anything in the US or in, so this is open to the public. And that, that'll be our goal, which is starting to learn the people to utilize the system and getting the ready to use it. There is a few counties that do it, I know, um, Momma's, they do it countywide, um, they actually do it, they're county administered program for the whole entire county. Um, the Mid State, Atlantic County, it's, you know, they kind of, uh, they're the municipalities, but we are looking at five municipality right now, we'll be.
Thank you.
Yeah, with our two, uh, that's very nice comment. Our current, we are, um, a five, it's about six, and we've got, um, guidance to, ultimately our already counties, um, have to meet the guidance plan, um, one step goes through, we are to restore a reverification that's, uh, uh.
Right. Does this count for the, uh, as well?
Yes, well, certainly, we're watching the, uh, uh.
This also gives us, uh, a chance for the single jersey, uh, and as well as the residents, the program as well, uh, under the Atlantic County.
I just want to thank everybody for not yelling at me.
Uh, Councilman Dan, well, he yelled at me a few times and he doesn't probably remember when I failed him out at the game, the championship. But he actually won the game, you know, but you didn't start out.
I probably yelled at you a whole lot.
A whole lot. Councilman, certainly, and he was in the, uh, a union official, I was in labor relations in Casino, he had many experience. So, and Councilman Swan, he grew up in Reddick, we were always arguing in the school yard and football, and local politics, so, and your CFO, my CFO, was Reddick when I was there. And he didn't yell at me, but he often said, you can't spend that much. So I appreciate that.
So you're always in a lot of trouble.
I'm sorry?
So you're always in trouble.
Oh, boy. It's hard, man. I'm sorry. But thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation. Appreciate it.
Uh, Residence 73, admitting the created current accounting rate budget for year 2022. Residence 74, admitting the created sole utility temporary budget for year 2022. That's just a drill to build.
Three minutes, two minutes. Um, we're going to build at, uh, we've been, between that council meeting and this council meeting, um, a couple of your kids, uh, were filled over the midst this time. Biggest one was, uh, out there at the G A for 13,000 and the other big one is, uh, good care for, uh, employees, retired employees. Additionally, uh, we do underwire transfers in the same page, $648,000 to pay for payroll for, for food and then $426,000 as a bulk of medical for the month for active and retired Uh, although from bill, it will look to be approved this time, uh, if you look halfway down, um, where's the thin top uniform, you'll see number 2895, and that is for per government employee, uh, government workers contract, these are for food. Uh, partly contracted, we buy food up to a hundred and fifty dollars, and you put that to take out of the higher. Uh, come down below that, uh, H C U A, see the first quarter, waste quarter bill, $542,000. That is just, again, the first quarter for store treatment and the 109, uh, the normal monthly, uh, track weapon. The one we can load that, uh, then county treasurer, and then we'll blame, impression on that too. Um, if we were able to get, uh, uh, care services with the county, uh, we're saving anywhere between 25, 35,000 a gallon, um, these for February. I don't know what, I, I know we'll save that much in March because it's really just tax payment, but I don't want to be able to, as well, any approval. Uh, go up to page two, uh, second line, cost of payroll services. This is probably seven weeks of payroll money, they, they charge, obviously, a fee. I try to pay their claim once a week, you know, you fill me a monthly, I'm sorry, you fill me every two weeks. Uh, and then, uh, let's see, let's see page three, uh, halfway down the middle of the slide, last, you know, you've gone over this before, this is, uh, for management and, uh, work they're doing at Choker, Choker Field, not the old Choker Field, Choker Field, and, uh, trying to get, your work being done by the professionals for architectural, landscaping, and trying to get work into the P to satisfy, uh, the grain. Sure.
How long this is dated, uh, July 9th, 2021?
That's a David, uh, that's a David, the original contract, uh, original agreement. We, we, what we did, we set up a blank bridge order and then when we renew, set, set them up and then if we pay against, we draw down the, uh, that.
He said he has a, a, a bank statement?
We, we, well, we know we're going to set up, spend a certain amount of money, uh, we do, we do a blank bridge order. And you'll see all those things with the beam loans, when we, on the right hand side, look through bills, they are, we know where to pay those bills, and what we do, we set up a blank bridge order to allocate the money, or imagine they handle the budget. We see things like, uh, so that coastal, we, we know how much we're paying a year.
That's mine.
Well, this is a, like a planner example. Uh, we, we know what we're paying and what we have to pay, so we set up a blank bridge order, we deduct that budget, so we have money there to pay for it.
Question.
Um, on page four, this is off page four, and so our monthly payments to the school, and you'll see that this is January 2022 to June 22, this is March payment, but we, again, we set up a blanket for six months. Um, near the bottom, you'll see that government township, there's two bills there, one for shared services for I T of 12,004, um, which is listing savings for what we were paying in the past, and then the other one is dispatch services, uh, for what we're paying in advance, we pay it quarterly and they take care of, uh, for dispatch, pay expire and whatnot, we're due, and I T takes care of us and we're in the process of going up, creating a lot of our bulk work, who will be, uh, full of, uh, it will be taxed, we have a lot of information that's a different requiring to do, we're in the process of changing our emails, making it really, uh, tough for anyone to break into. And then on page five, the last, you know, the one there is, uh, one is for prosecutor services, so our normally monthly payment, and then the additional amount for, uh, what we're all in a couple weeks ago, we would be very separate, 7,000.
I have a question.
They, they spend that 40 hours, they don't even go over.
Okay. And it's not on you, it's not on you, but it's not on us. We gave Cooper Robinson the contract, we are faceless, on January 1, 2022. They took the case by November February that knew they were only conflicted, and they allowed it to go on. I would like you, as our council, to go back to Mr. Lloyd Robinson and Wando, uh, Rafferty, to come here to the next city council meeting, sit at the podium, and explain to the seven of us, or anybody who cares, why they did that to us. We were their client first. They put us at the back of the bus to take on a client, I'm presuming because the outcome was one of the best. They put us in a position that we had to hire an outside legal advisor, probably had to pay more money for it, I'm not sure what, how many, how we knew of that, but it, it's not anything else but the principle. They were, they were more than ready to take our contract anywhere they want. By November February?
Um, and I heard you before, so I'll, I'll, so I may need to make that a question, you know, you know, that, I will say this, so on, uh, and I'm not speaking for them, we're just speaking.
And I, I don't want to do a thing. So you're all in part of the party, because you had words. I am part of it, and my next question, and I will address that in the, uh, well, there's something else to go with it, because I'm sure you have part of the team, right? On what, on what, so instead of us paying $7,700 to an outside council, how about we put the owners on Cooper Robinson to put up a Chinese firewall to make sure that we're not conflicted? Let them spend the money to do it. Why should we, a city in need, have to put up more money to get outside council? We picked Cooper Robinson because we wanted Cooper Robinson. We could have picked somebody else, but that's what we picked. No, we're not getting the full resources of Cooper Robinson. Let them spend the money to put up the Chinese firewall, so there's no conflict.
So, and, and I heard it on record at the council meeting, we were, that I was reading something about conflict, but there was correspondence, funding, after we all spoke internally, I, I also spoke with the shaking, who's our executive manager as well, because there was a lot of, the executive, we go to the shaking, we continue to protect that. In the correspondence that, from me, that was written from our office, it stated that this was not a conflict, but the appearance of the, of the, of the party we're sitting here would have caused more issues for you all, and that's why I left. That was one, one of the problems. The other response was, the way the ordinance read, even though it was on a municipal prosecution, it allowed for a municipal prosecution to have those, to change, meaning they were with the testimony, and I'm speaking for all of you, but I know companies have, have some, uh, just, because, uh, it was based on efficiency and based on me, thought that perhaps this should take over as the, uh, prosecutorial, prosecutorial, so the firm has always stood and stated to you all that it was not a conflict because there was no, um, involvement of the city of Pleasantville, and I was having to let me see, I'm always speaking, you are supposed to be in a school competition, but I was in abundance of caution because you're right, city of Pleasantville is our client, is my client, and when those competitions had to be had, I was at the table to determine first and foremost, was there a conflict in the city of Pleasantville, or was it something that was not one, but out of an abundance of caution for the city, I left, and I was only right there. And I didn't know, but I stayed here because it's my obligation to stay as your attorney. But it's been stated by my firm in writing and to everyone, since I'm a president, since I'm the manager, it was not a conflict, so just because of the fact of the, the city, the nature of it, we need to step away, don't allow you all to, to, to do that.
I want to appreciate, I want to appreciate you, Cooper Robinson, know that a letter was written, I mean, written stating that it was not a conflict because I never knew that. And, um, question, who made the decision, um, to have this hook, uh, to be, I guess, um, uh, so, I mean, not, well, part of it and us for this case?
That was a recommendation you wanted from me, that this hook is a municipal prosecution in the municipal, municipal, territorial type of hearing, she should be the one to settle this, I got the decision, not mine, but this was a business decision, but that was in the letter when I figured out this.
So under legal counsel advice, then I took that into consideration and that's how we ended up here, uh, protesting. So I did hear the, uh, council was thinking we went out to outside council, we didn't go to outside council, we used our inside council, we were, uh, we just, uh, we didn't who couldn't represent us.
Oh, I, I get all the other things, I just want to be clear, make sure that the information that was.
We could have, we could have.
But out of an abundance of, that's it.
Uh, yes.
But I was, I left the meeting and that in the other room and I, okay.
And is this the last time that that's going to happen? Because nobody hasn't changed, that nothing else is going to happen where you're going to be conflicted. That's my point. It doesn't have anything to do, my fault is, we gave your firm a contract. The first time we needed your firm, we're waiting for the last chance, what? Can't do it.
Actually, that's not the first time.
So, I know.
You just, we are, 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 we
And I will say, as Delana mentioned, we were talking, we were writing tax appeals. They were existing before they even, uh, I think, a couple of weeks, a couple of months, a week ago, we approved the Thomas Smith as our ordinance counsel attorney. These were no tax appeals of the state, and also some redevelopment agreements. You think they were prior to us, and now we have to talk to you to tell us.
I don't have an issue with the tax appeal. I understand Cooper Levinson has, you know, ten folks all over, but that's fine, I don't see a problem with that. It is, if nothing else, the principle. We gave you a contract, anywhere you want, and by the end of February, we're like yesterday, we told you. We took on a case that you knew that there was going to be an issue with, but we told you that it's like the city. It's not that there was a conflict, and I keep saying that over and over again. It's because my sitting here creates the issue for you. Now, on the computer, it's like, that's taking that case, is that? That made a conscious decision to take on that case, put us in this, and put you in jeopardy. And that's why I want Levinson and Lafferty to tell us what the rationale was to say, yes, we have a contract with you, but we went ahead and took this. Because that's a conflict, the investigation has done it. And I've got my law degree on TV, so I know.
Counselor, I just want to ask one question. You said you're taking on that, um, that case, it's not a conflict, am I right? All right, so basically, you just beat that horse, but you're saying that it wasn't a conflict, and that you just did that out of caution? Okay.
That's what the letter.
Well, we didn't, we never saw the letters, the first, I'm hearing of laws, but the council said, we didn't know it was about.
You didn't get the letter, but we, when we went into, uh, the executive session to elaborate about why this dinner hook was taken, that was explained, maybe not in terms that, uh, our solicitors explaining it now, but there was an explanation given. So, and just keep in mind that everybody, I, I see this from you all, I didn't hear this, I didn't hear that. We're not going to be able to keep the search bonded, but we're doing our best to make that, we can't do the protocols and practices that we have a place to make sure that you all get information. It's why we should sat in the executive session for over forty minutes or so, because we want to make sure that you all get the information. So I don't want it to appear to the public that we are not operating in a transparent manner, because we are.
No, I mean, we are, but it's just.
Well, I'm talking about me, I'm talking about.
Right, you're right, you're right, you're right. But it's just certain things that we hear at a council meeting that we never heard before. So I mean, I'm not sure if it's supposed to come from our president.
We talked about this, we have talked about this, and we have talked about ways to make sure that you all get that information. If I had to sit here every day and get seven people, eight, and two people that I supervise information all day, every day, you know, that's not practical. But we talked about things in which you all should get, and how you should get it, and you guys have yet to put that into practice. You're absolutely right.
Okay. So, any other question?
Uh, next is, uh, from the fortune, uh, the general items.
Next is from the fortune, uh, the general items, home to come forward, just to take the address.
Mr. President, Adestis Norman, about three hundred, uh, sixty Avenue. Uh, two thousand and apartment. Would, uh, would we know what the, some of the stuff was to, to let?
What, what, uh, what's that?
Uh, I, I would say that, oh, oh, yeah. And I've never existed one year, uh, that's never happened. So I guess when I could go, what was so heavy, you know, that, that was, that took so long. I've got a good view from the, uh, so, yes, Graham. Are you, are you, Lord, uh?
Yes.
And what is your name?
Cooper Levinson.
Cooper Levinson, okay.
So Delana, I'm a, I'm a partner of Cooper Levinson on the board.
So what is it?
So, um, I didn't even know that.
Uh, I can listen to this, please.
I can, I, I want to, I want to first hear your name. What was your last name?
Uh, Adestis Norman.
Um, it's up on the next meeting, and, uh, it's a little short. So, uh, for the purpose, we don't normally know in the closed session, but under the Open Public Meetings Act, there are certain exceptions to a meeting that allows councils to have a conversation with the client. So tonight's meeting involves contractual negotiations. Um, you may be aware that there's ongoing conversations in regards to your steward system here in the city. So we're still in negotiations with the, the party committee.
Steward?
Yes, yes. So I need to apprise the client about contractual changes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. President, uh, Mr. Louie, uh, did, as we discussed, that, uh, we, we paid or we spent, uh, part of the forty-three thousand dollars, uh, steward treatment, denied consecutive.
For first quarter, for first three months.
Okay. Is that, uh, traditional, or a little bit of?
It is a little bit above normal, but because that's up in prior year, the next quarter, next three quarters, we'll, we do.
Uh, thanks, uh, Richard, uh, the car, showing, showing to, I hope, we can, one day, the bar big enough, and room full, uh, let's throw money up. You can ask for us, uh, I've always been here for thirty years, we make it better for those to follow us. Uh, the rest, it's, uh, for them, who is the chair president of Public Works?
Look, some chairman, or a steward, they separate the two. So some words called, let's call them the chief meeting, so.
I, I guess the way I know is he's a company, basically.
It's not the example.
It's, it's our chairman, uh, he's a company, by example, uh, certainly, uh, that's also, that was six minutes later, uh, two months ago, that's the, uh, recreation system, uh, I, I heard. These nickels, I mean, trying to, and thanks to the news today, I was down, some sort, uh, with things, I don't know, the steer here, but, uh, we have a vote, and I must, I'll call it a day, almost, you, so they do those every day. So that was done, uh, compliments, and I'm here, President, and counsel for a constitution, uh, that Richard, thank you, very much, and I'm waiting to get that.
I was to record, I was, you know, I did not, was not aware to inform the company, but please forgive me at the beginning, I had not.
What is, what is?
I want to just make that hold the record.
No, I'm only for this.
Please forgive me, that was my last, like, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The skin is real thick, yeah.
It was like a million dollars, I wanted to make sure that was clear, but I don't really do that.
And, and, and I think, I wonder if Mr. Louie, how much money, uh, I know it's a fifty, so he was sending over to, uh, the board of executives, you have, you have.
Seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars a month.
Seven hundred and ninety-eight, yeah, okay. And now, we, we thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Anyone else from the public?
Henrietta Hamil, I am the resident of Foxconn, uh, Bill, and this is Margaret Wilson, she's a public speaker here. And we're here tonight about an issue we're having with Utah Avenue, again, it's a new issue. But with Margaret's talk, because she has fifty ten.
This, you have the way this is going to the general item. We have the way it's going.
Is that tonight? I've been here since five years, too.
Anyone else here, uh, I'm hoping to close the, uh.
Second.
Okay.
Uh.
Oh, anyone? Anyone else? All right, most of the board's there. Most of them. Thank you. Been a long night, been a long night.
State Council, regular meeting, day eight, is March twenty-first, November twenty-two. Time is eight twenty-five. If you have been doing outside, you can take a fourth of, 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 even have, uh, long sunshine, he's been having a case.
Swan?
Here.
Davenport?
Correct.
Seminole? Here. Thomas? Hardman? Camona?
Correct.
Korea?
Captain.
Siskel?
Correct.
All of them.
First on the agenda is ordinance number three, public care required, amended chapter forty-eight, police department, entitled higher, and motions added section forty-eight dash fourteen A, entire exemption for civil services, you know. Second. Well, public care. So it's.
Any more from the public?
Is there any more for the public that I would like to give a comment regarding ordinance number three, since it conforms to the union, and address? See, you don't want me to make a motion to close the public court. Correct. Okay, we get a motion to, do roll call.
That's current.
Ryan?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Camona? Free Seminole, yes. Thomas? Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Siskel?
Yes.
Order adopted. Ordinance number four, first reading, amend the chapter one sixteen and chapter three hundred of the city code, regulating the operations of Kansas, the visiting city.
Fourth. Second.
Roll call Swan?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Seminole, yes. Thomas? Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Siskel?
Yes.
Order adopted, the second reading scheduled for April the fourth. Resolution seventy-two, approval to facilitate and the lead implementation grant?
Not considered.
Roll call Swan?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Seminole, yes. Thomas? Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Siskel? Resolution approved. Resolution seventy-three, amending the created current accounting temporary budget for year twenty twenty-two?
Okay.
Roll call Swan?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Seminole, yes. Thomas? Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Siskel?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution seventy-four, amending the created soar utility temporary budget for year twenty twenty-two?
Okay.
Roll call Swan?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Seminole, yes. Thomas? Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Siskel? Resolution approved. I need a motion to approve the building. Correct. Swan?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Seminole, yes. Thomas? Camona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Siskel?
Yes.
Motion approved. Next, a court.
Next, a court. Court, motion, it was a court.
And that's correct.
That is correct.
We have a situation that we'd like to turn your attention to. We go about our public safety, or we call Avenue. I know some of you don't know that we call Avenue, let's say, the dead actually that we've been working in. And that's the community in that way, also upon public supervision. Now, in this current, that all of a sudden we're getting a lot of commercials, mock stuff, and commercials that are in the apartment that's... Which makes two ways, as possible, and very much concerning our public safety, and what's the most important to that comes through the... Although, we are in different part of the community, so that can accomplish the need tomorrow, because it's not a particular theater. And at the same time, you have residents on the next way to term, or having to afford a new term, and they're going to have more cost than... So, the resolution that we recommended that we'd like to revise, instead of having one, um, set it for a year, but in fact, we don't have it. We go back to doing most of the...
You call Avenue, now, if you're leaving here, is that after Fox Farm, or the next street perhaps?
Yeah, it was just north of Fox Farm.
Okay, I understand.
And there's only one house on that street?
I know exactly where you're talking about.
Okay, right, so just to pass it around, I think we should take it with this morning. About to break up, pass it around with the...
It's a tiny little street. It's like a caravan put up. And then, this started with its one truck, and within literally two weeks, we now have open people coming, who are part of... And I bet, and then, those these people are looking, they're not living in a complex that's doing this. And they want to, they're starting their businesses, and what's the name of the partner complex that they want to close? And causing problems for me?
I'm worried that I didn't even get out. Do they have apartments, do they leave any apartments, or is that what's happening?
No, that's just a public street. There has been parts that have been to, um, business operations when it started, and they have people, instead of anything, it's not the legal for them to park there. Though it's not really a really wide street, and still, we have to be able to park in front of land, that's really wide street, something, and it's driving, and something like that. But they're being a dead-end street, because now that one person at the end, and it became two, and it's called two of them anymore, who were at... We asked, one person to not to drive there, we said, yes, maybe, and now, we feel that we give, like, the absence, and we have to make sure not to park there. And, so, so, and so, and so, and then, the other person, we were asking, you're not the person, you're the owner, it's all that, and what is happening immediately, we have to say, first, parking your... We do have other residents that started a, um, flatbed, co-truck, and we could expect that other parts not to park there, because of public safety. But now, once, once, we're doing it, and so, so, around the other, the parts that they, they're aware of, they're going to continue doing it. So, to be, to be, to be... Yeah, so, um, where I think was, before Council, was something we're interested in before our public safety committee, and we had issues with, we saw Avenue had, and we tried to... Right, but, um, this problem with commercial buildings happening all throughout the town, maybe we need to sit down, and let me talk about what that looks like, um, specifically, uh, we call the, uh, priority. Uh, Councilman Camona is our, um, Public Safety Chair, and will certainly put your, his, 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 and, uh, we have the Police Department, and we're going to have a discussion, and I'll get back to you, uh, as always, you know, and we'll get back to you.
This is almost over seventy years, I believe. It's far off that dramatic, I've seen this in the public. From the early beginnings to where we are today speaks volumes about children's vision and violence, but also children's commitment. The Joker had a field in back of the old high school. A field that was deeply right to play on, you know, unusually. The city had a responsibility and obligation to provide facilities for this youth organization in this city, and it was to be reckoned with, no half step. Well, who we have today, right, and saying, when I'm here about is about the Joker House. The Joker House that sat in Max Manning Field. The Joker House that sat dormant for almost over two years, three years dormant, I understand, with mold infestation. And if anyone knows anything about their mind, they know the facts, especially mold issues. You know, first and foremost, right, what did you do with mold? You cut it out, practically, you eliminated it. You treat it, you do something, right, and saying, you know, to mitigate this situation. The Joker House is just set there, nobody has touched it. When in the summer of, I think it was twenty, the summer of nineteen twenty?
Eighty twenty-four.
In the summer of nineteen, in the summer of twenty twenty, I went into, stepped into it and fell through the doggone floor because of the violent storm. It's because of what material the floor was made of. It was called playwood. Playwood, if anyone, like, would tell you, you know, will absorb moisture. It's not trying to. Come to find out, right, and saying, you get insulation underneath the bottom of it, right, and saying, it's all, you know, damp. The building itself, right, and saying, wasn't usable. And it had an air conditioner running the whole time that I was staying. I said, well, why would you have an air conditioner on, right, in this building instead of, you know, opening up the windows or letting it breathe out? Well, the situation is still the same. But last year, last year, we had two teams go to the championship. The varsity and the junior varsity. Although we didn't win, but them kids got out there, you know, they represented the city of Clevelandville. And we let them have stuff. They have now had to take their uniforms and their equipment and put them in the storage paying over a hundred and sixty thousand a month, right, for the storage fee. Which could well accumulate to around sixteen hundred dollars. But yet still, the city of this city gives them fifteen hundred dollars, fifteen measly hundred dollars. That is what I'm talking about. We haven't provided the support, the support that you guys want. And Swan, you well know what the hell I'm talking about, because you sat there, you were here. When this, when this stuff, then you've been here, man, you've been, right, a supporter of the Joker, all these years, all the thirty so many years I've been in this town, you've been the supporter. How could you let this damn shit happen? And this is crazy. This is absolutely crazy. Them kids got out on that field, coming out of COVID, coming out of COVID, representing you guys. Linda, you know what I'm talking about, Mr. Payton, right? Your husband, right, and saying, got out there and cooked the hot dog and hamburgers and everything, right? You know, and again, right, and saying, we all, you know, have some level of responsibility. But it's on you to make sure, right, that you let these kids know that you got their And that is what, you know, I'm talking about here tonight. Because that hasn't been done. You have, you don't have their backs. Because you let a doggone building that they needed desperately to store their equipment in, to have their little meetings in, you let it sit dormant. All this time, that we could have been down there. I talked to Mr. Strong, and I told him that you had community persons that were willing to donate materials and do their labor. On the building costing you nothing, nothing. Thousands of dollars. People were willing to do it. I was told hands off, city's gonna handle this, it's gonna be remediated, right, and saying, the buildings will be put back to use, right? It didn't happen. And it ain't happened. Now I hear, right, some talk about, you know, demolishing the building. But I'll tell you what, here's the deal for you. I can give five thousand for the building, right, and saying, and I'll pay for the cost of moving the building, if you did put a new structure in. A new structure that these kids believe. Because that's what you owe to them.
I was still your partner, did it, in fact, with you.
Oh, I gotta think this, there's a problem with the, yeah.
There's a problem where, where it's key actually, as a manager, the perfect, the right way, over the years, a lot of the, I don't know, who was supposed to watch this, what happened to the building, but.
But let's start here. I don't want to get in a situation in which we're pointing fingers. I think we need to address the point of what Mr. Ward was saying, he's about to commit a level of city and how to support the building's new proposal. That has, as relates to the information that my office, you see from the contracts that have worn out, um, within the last year or so, to look at the work that these people have done, is admirable. You've been in there, you see the condition of the place. So point that to us that we might as well demolish it before, um, you have time to put all that money into it, and then you have it more than. So before we even consider that, our thought process, when we had this conversation with our recreation community, maybe both come to Joker's or others, like yourself, and interest should be part of the conversation, you said, what do we do if we demolish it? What now? So we were talking about ties and all these different other alternatives that we could do to make sure that they have place at least for storage. We had our superintendent at the time do some research, the Habitat for Humanity would help us, if there were other agencies out there that would help, you know, because at one time, there was some organization we were told that was, you know, giving ties or something to our community and community. So when we were doing our research to see where we could go, pandemic hit us, and it kind of just stalled. So you have a valid point. I think what we're going to do is seriously get back to the table and talk about a plan as to how we move forward to make sure that the kids have the proper resources that they need within the community, so that we could, you know, make sure that they understand that we support them because we do. So I just want to get back to the table, you're going, if they have, if you still have information of these people who are willing to come and contribute to this project, maybe we all need to take a walk through and see if it's worth it. If it's not worth it, then we have to sit down and talk about alternatives. But let's start the conversation again and not just keep talking about it, okay?
Let me, and I thank you very much for that, and I, and I appreciate these places, you 'll be the same. I am a former, was a former property manager of Atlantic City House and Center. I managed Stanley Homes Village, in most of this town, right, and Atlantic City had the emergency, and then I got transferred up to manage, uh, to a park, I mean, uh, next, the uptown, I got managed, right, and saying, uh, you have to go around one of those. My residence for a unit built, right, went to five hundred, right, and saying, in twenty-five. I know what mold is. I know what it does, I know what, you know, what it can do. I love going, right, and saying, and training and mold remediation. And the first thing that they teach you, right, and saying, you don't need to treat it, you need to cut it out. And what I'm saying to you is this. If that is what you guys are gonna do, right, then it shouldn't have been done. If anything, you should have taken out the walls and just let the building sit there if you didn't have, right, the way the walls, right, and saying, to manage, you know, to do a construction. That didn't happen, neither that happened. What I'm talking about now, going forward, is that we have talked about this, we have asked to be part of the conversation, right? There hasn't been any conversation about this particular issue. Well, understanding that, right, and saying, what, what can, what hopefully will happen, the building doesn't need to be demolished. The bottom line is the fact, right, and saying, you just need to be remediated, take out, right, the sheet block, take out the flooring, take out, you know, the insulation, and then build it anew. And you make it mold resistant. But the problem is, Linda, is that where the building sits at? It sits on ground that absorbs moisture. That's the problem. You, the building sits down. So where does water want butt down? It's how, it's where it was placed at, you know, on, on that complex. You have another building, it sits right across the doggone lock, it's had two stories on it. What about, right, and saying, remind me in that building, making that the Joker House? What about adding on to that? What about, right, and saying, one, the Creeeta, asking Creeeta for money, right, and saying, because they did, they did wonders, right, and saying, for the Atlantic City Dolphins?
We can get some money from Creeeta. Because we've been soliciting Creeeta, as soon as there was, so that, and we don't continue to do that, Margaret, but I just want to put it out there that we.
The same way that them folks marched down, down the home of point, right, and saying, or on Sunday, right, and saying, we need to march over the Creeeta the next time that they have a meeting. But if you got a mayor that talks about the great Atlantic City, right, and saying, you know, and he's on the Creeeta board, so, and you know, and also he represents, right, and saying, the mayor, right, and saying, for the Dolphins in Atlantic City. We are their brothers and sisters, right? Therefore, right, and saying, you solicit their support. You have, right, and saying, a person, right, and saying, that's on the county council, right? We need to solicit their support. That's where it needs to happen.
Margaret, we had and we will continue to develop the Joker House, okay?
You know, you know, you know, your heart hurts, your heart hurts, right? You know, your heart hurts, right, and saying, when you see your kids, right, and saying, run up down the doggone field, right? When you see the cheerleaders, right? David got four-year-old, five-year-old cheerleader, right, because my, my little niece is one of them, right, and saying, she's on there pre-cut, right? And I'm saying to you, right, and saying, this is the commitment that we have to be kept. What part are you on here? I ain't talking about a building, I'm talking about a commitment from the city. Mayor Peterson used to make sure, right, and saying, that the Joker's got an ample amount of money to start our season, it was five thousand dollars. And then we had to do the two cleanups, right? Mr. Swan, right, on every part of this city. And we got twenty-five hundred dollars each, and that was ten thousand dollars to start us up. We had our own fundraising mechanism, and they still do, uh, do that kind of stuff. The community workers, local ten thirty-eight, uh, of Southern New Jersey, right, has donated over twelve thousand dollars. Over twelve thousand dollars to this organization over the last four or five years. And that's only because I sit, right, and saying, at the vice presidency seat, and I advocate for these kids. This is the part that, you know, we're trying to play here. Listen to what, what's being said to you folks. Look at what your responsibility is to these children. They gave three hundred children last year. They dropped the doggone enrollment from a hundred and twenty-five to fifty dollars just so that they could create more opportunities for kids to participate. They are doing their job. I want you all to do yours. Do mine.
Anyone else want to talk?
I feel a modern passion, uh, going to the children. And when you guys pretty much gave the land over, over there in the old high school, you could have said, we would have given you that, why don't you give us the money to help the children? But that would have made millions off that, right, that you gave away for practice. You weren't here when they sold the land after your poor high school. I know Swan, definitely. He's still with, um, the old million dollar project.
Swan was still with the, uh, the old million dollar project.
That, that man named, one neighbor, I guess, one year, hopefully it's gonna burn into a, a lot of.
No, I, I understand what you're trying to say.
Children's, children's, children's.
No, 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 what I'm saying, he practically gave the land over, and nothing, he said.
Okay, you couldn't get anything, so, you know.
That's, that's not. Well, for the amount of money that it was giving away, these guys wanted me, I too. So what I understand was given away for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is that correct? All of that land for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you gonna tell me they got the two hundred and eighty fifty thousand dollars? And they're gonna make millions off their project. And they couldn't have given a little back to the Joker's, for as they can. The other land that you, uh, you just gave away on California land, that you sold on, they're gonna make millions off America. They can't give back to this community, to the youth? You know why they not? Because we don't advocate. And we don't act for it, we just give away what we know. We have, uh, that's all I have to say on that. Who owns the building, you know, Washington and, uh, man? Does the city own it? Yeah, the brick building, they do own that. How long has that been sitting there, Dave? Long ago, I think, because, right, and saying, we have any, have you tried to sell it? What are we gonna do with that?
We've got, we've got fifteen on the development area, so, um, the, the Washington and Fox Street, they've set up a state of public, our redevelopment plan, um, and unfortunately we, we went away, um, to support the case two, that building is in what we consider a phase two of redevelopment coming in, um, and once we get money for the leverage, um, our, we probably will try to do five, like, that area where they can sell, we have et cetera.
Do you want to leave that in the present, now? Because we should be able to do some, some. Now, what about the building called Street? The, the building, right, called?
See, we're working, yeah, now that is.
I mean, that is a million, a million.
So we've been going back and forth, looking over that building.
I took the city on.
No, we don't own it. Yeah, we've been trying to get them to bring it up to a safety, um, code, um, which, you can see they're doing some outside work to that, but, um, that's.
I know you.
Well, no.
I didn't see you.
Good evening, ma'am, Mr. Payton. My name is Desmond Joy, I'm afraid you can't believe it, but doesn't, uh, doesn't go into the management, and, uh, I'm concerned, my concern has been the look of Andy's book. We had a beautiful memorial, and, you see, I'm, maybe not better. We had the beautiful memorial, and the potholes approaching that monument, I forget this. And I'm deciding now, who do I speak to, or who can be addressed to, uh, pay, to do more to this built part of this, but make that, make that shortness, but being a lot of, of, well, think of the beauty to enhance the memorial, that's my.
You're, you're asking, might as well, so, um, we've been putting a land sale in that area for quite some time, because there's infrastructure issues, um, so we're, we ask you just, um, put in some, I think, money and infrastructure money, so that we can deny and forego our new construction money for the road improvement, and order plus the, uh, split on the other structure. So that'll be, that'll be upcoming, I'm pleased to say that it's upcoming, um, we get a structural worker, and then the road is being on top, and you may be a different looking at the area, but that's, that's, but that is the reason why we haven't been able to, if you're, if your structure has deteriorated, um, maybe, you know.
No, I'm glad to hear that you've served this, you've been reasonable, and appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to talk? Most of, thanks.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for coming out. We have heard the pin sirens, and most of them we heard before, and we are fine, so the rest of them. Mr. Draper, that is something, um, what you just mentioned, as far as answering, we were just talking about that last week, as far as trying to bond for it, rather than wait for other ways that seeks the infrastructure that we could do to free. And, uh, as far as the children, Margaret left already, but yes, we do care about the children.
Yes, ma'am.
What's the matter? We do care about the children, and, you know, fifteen hundred dollars that, uh, Margaret was just talking about, so, that, that money has been reused, needs to get more, that's the, yeah, and that was for cleaning.
And, but when I saw, I'm just coming to see you going, what, I don't know how the Joker's always comes up, because I don't want to speak for us?
No, 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 I'm just asking, you know, because we're, we take it for granted, but, we do care about the children, and, you know, will you see, what happens? We don't have funding, we don't have athletic associations, like a lot of the other newspapers do, to be able to just hand over money like that. And if, if we did, we'd have to dispense it, you know, dispense it equally. Tonight, we had our students come, Andy, Janiya, and Faith, from, uh, the high school, come to the council meeting and share different things that's going on at the high school. And they're gonna be coming once a month, every.
Student council?
No, no, they're just coming to our.
They'll be student representatives to council.
And they'll be coming every week, and they just really tell us their activities and different things going on. So that's, they have to say it's everyone. When there's anything going on in school, anything, there are you, you know, they work hard, and when they do shows and everything, should support them. That's what I did. Everyone have good evening. Late meeting.
Good evening, everybody, thank you for coming out, uh, don't worry, you have a friend, uh, we look forward to taking care of you, and thank you, have a better time. I want to thank everybody for coming in and expressing concern, uh, to get that all of the things down, and make sure we follow up with most of the things. Thank you.
Just want to tell you guys that, you know, the situation with the Joker's, I think is something that we need to put a little bit more of our attention to. I agree with what Mr. Ward was saying about us not giving them enough, enough attention. We all are youth in the city. I think our city pride is just going to be better once we start giving them more attention, and, uh, making sure that we participate a little bit more with the Joker's and the school system, try to make it just one more family, so we can get some things done, and a better man for our youth. And I don't know, you know, how much money we have to play with, but, um, I'm gonna talk to Ms. Thomas, because we're on the same committee, the recreation committee, and I think we need to find a way to, uh, support them a little bit more. I watch other towns, other townships, and they support their children a hundred percent. And I think we fall by this side, and that, you know, for the bottom, we need to look at that, we want to see, you know, how we can do better.
And how they just go along with us. Yeah.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for coming out. To, like, to Joker's, I don't know who manages that, maybe that's where he's struggling, like, uh, where he's doing, flying out. Because, like, I never been monitoring Joker's, ever, and, but nobody ever asks, you know, I mean, it's just like, I don't even know where you can get this tech, though. There's a lot of business, there's a lot of business to keep on this town, but there's a lot of.
Now, again.
But you can, you can, you can, you can.
He can tell, then hold, and then, and, and.
I'm gonna make sure, like, yeah, I definitely want to, because if you have, like, we have a, we have a place to go, I have three companies, like, one building, I mean, there's, we do other different businesses, you all, you know, there's, there's no reason you guys need to go.
And everybody, follow us on Facebook, Joker Family, I'll post every day, so, you know, all the upcoming events and everything that we have, and we have to do. So thank you.
You guys can take out.
I, when we gave you a protocol for the, for the, for the, I'm sorry? When we gave you a protocol for the, I'm on, I'll go out there, I'll be in the middle of the street, I'll, I'll help you, you know, you need more people out there, like, you can have the little kids out there, it's like, contact me, I'll be out there, I'll help you with whatever you need to do, the more people you have, the more orders you add, the more money you bring in. So, Dale, with me, my, it's, yeah.
I just want to inform you all that we have a, um, coming out of Cleveland Recreation, the Easter egg hunt, it's gonna be at Max Manning Conference on Saturday, April the ninth, at one o'clock sharp. Um, you do have to register at the rest, um, if anyone needs that information, I have it here. And I want to commend the mayor for, um, having the students here, um, this evening, and, um, I'm just hoping that we get good press out of that press, um, but I want to just thank you all for coming out, and you have Samara, I'm here as well, you know that.
Um, just to all of the public in the comments that will be, uh, ensuring that you do that needs to be followed up from the, you know, and have proper, you know, there's that, you know, the public time.
One thing I didn't say, ma'am, ma'am, one thing that I didn't mention was, um, when Renee was here talking about the trucks, that's a thing that we've been working on a lot, because there's a lot of tractor trailers that's parking on the side streets also. We're just leaving the trailer part, and the cab part is gone, so we were asking everybody to, um, report that, when you see it, just as they came and reported the box truck, if you see the tractor and trailer, if you would follow and report the address. Yes, Mr. Payton?
Blue, we put that through specifically. I had an issue, where I had, you know, we call the police, and I have much to take to do about that, because it's a public street.
But there's something with, uh, tractor trailer.
Well, Mr. Payton, can you, um, make the public aware of the app that you have? Um, there is a public service, that's, that's a good one. There, there's, um, a public service app, that if you go to the city website, you'll see public service, and it says potholes and other services, you can go right to that app and put in whatever your issues are, or whatever you're trying to report, and that comes up, I listen to my office, and I send it out to the tougher, uh, department. Can I just add, you also can take a picture of, um, whatever it is, and, um, it goes straight here, um, and.
And you're on Shaglin, you, I'm in Ward Two, you're Mike, I'm the builder, and it, um, tnl.com, and just email me whatever, in terms of that. And Mr. Trancis, um, the gentleman, Mr. Ed, well, he's as well.
Thank you, thank you for the time, uh, for coming out, and I think we covered it all from the chief, grass, they should draw chief, uh, Joker's, and we all, we need to all, uh, do some good things for the Joker's, and, um, everybody, God bless, thank you for the work. All the good journey.